All right, I have the time at six oh four and the date is today, June first, two thousand and twenty. So I'm going to call the Selma City Council Regular Meeting to order. Thank you. Being conducted at the Selma Council Chamber in Selma, California, and also via teleconference, phone number one three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. Conference ID number eight one two zero four five one one six zero seven. Password is nine three six six two. And I just need to read our legal notice before we begin and continue with our agenda. And here we go. On March fourth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Newsom proclaimed a state of emergency in California as a result of the threat of COVID nineteen. On March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Newsom issued an executive order N twenty nine twenty, which allows local legislative bodies to hold public meetings via teleconferencing and to make the public meetings accessible telephonically or otherwise electronically to all members of the public seeking to observe and to address the local legislative body. Pursuant to executive order N twenty nine twenty, please be advised that some or all of city council will participate in the meeting via teleconference. Public participation pursuant to executive order N twenty nine twenty and given the current health concerns, members of the public can't access the meeting streamed live on our YouTube page. Members of the public may not attend the meeting in person. In lieu of attendance at the meeting, the public can provide public comments verbally for the city council's consideration by calling on the phone number posted on our agenda. Staff will unmute the public during the public comment portion of the meeting. Alternatively, the public can also send correspondence to the city council regarding agenda items by emailing publiccomment@cityofselma.com by five P M. Of the day of the meeting with the subject line Selma City Council Meeting Correspondent Item and reference the agenda item you wish to comment on. Or in the subject line, you can put in City of Selma Non Agenda Item. All correspondence that does not relate to a specific item on the agenda will be made part of the official record of this meeting and will be referred to the city manager or other staff for appropriate action or attention. Correspondence that does relate to a specific item on the agenda will be addressed as appropriate during consideration of the agenda item when it which it relates to. Contact the city clerk with any questions. Should you have any questions at City Hall at phone number five five nine eight nine one two two zero zero extension three one zero four? Or by emailing using the email referenced above, which once again is publiccomment@cityofselma.com. Okay. And with that, we'll continue with our agenda and a much needed invocation for our community and our country and this whole world. So with that, I'd like to call on Lisa Statigberg, pastor of Take It By Force Global Church Ministries.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, praise the Lord. Father, our Lord, our God, we give you the glory, the praise and the honor. We come so humbled before your throne right now. And we thank you for who you are and all you do, for your wisdom, your strength. And we thank you for the blood of Jesus covering every aspect of this meeting over the city of Selma as we declare success and progress through this meeting tonight. And Father, we thank you for the hedge of protection even around this meeting and over our city. Father, we ask that you would guide every leader with your wisdom. We thank you for strategic insight, for planning. We thank you, God, for what you're doing in this city. We ask your name to be exalted and glorified. Father, we thank you for unity. We thank you, God, that you continue to be, Father, the guide. As you lead these leaders tonight, we give you all the glory, the praise and the honor. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, God bless.
Okay, Councilman Trillo, you have brought you have the pleasure allegiance. I believe he's asked us to stand, he's muted.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. With that on, we'll move on to potential conflict of interest. Any council member who has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing or voting on the matter. Is there anybody which to make a potential conflict? No, okay. With that, we'll move on to oral communications. Notice to the public, at this time, any member of the public may address city council regarding any item which the council has jurisdiction. No actions or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issue raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. City clerk, do we have anybody in the public who wish to speak at this moment?
We will go down the list. Hi caller, this is the time now that we are asking for oral communications. Is there anything that you would like to speak to the council regarding? Hi caller. The next one. Hi caller.
Hello.
This is a chance for you to speak. This is the opportunity during oral communications. Is there any time, is there anything that you would like to speak to the council regarding?
I would like to speak to the council regarding the districting. But I believe the districting will be spoken about at the end of the the meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, agenda number five. Okay, I will leave a note on here to remind me that you would like to speak on agenda item number five. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else which to speak? Or is that it?
Yes, we have, we have two more callers to ask. Hi, hi caller. I do see the last numbers on your, I do see that you are muted, but I need to ask you if there's anything that you wish to speak to under oral communications at this time?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. And lastly, one more. Hi caller, I do see that you are on the line and this is an opportunity for you to speak under oral communications. Is there anything that you wish to speak to with council? I do see this caller's name listed, last name as Navarro. Hi caller, is there anything that you wish to speak to under oral communications?
Not at this time, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And there is no emails. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to special presentations. We have two this evening with the first one being our COVID nineteen presentation.
I need a take roll.
Oh, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Avalos.
Hi.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Trahill. Thank you. Mayor Protem Gera.
Here.
Mayor Franco.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, city clerk. With that, now we will move on to our special presentation. We have two this evening, our first one being a presentation and update on COVID nineteen.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Thanks for coming to all the folks that are calling in this evening as well. I'm going to share my screen here and give you a PowerPoint update on COVID nineteen. Let's get this started. Can you all see that okay?
Yes.
I was losing internet a minute ago, so if I cut out, I will email this out to everyone, but hopefully we can stick with it. So this is a little bit updated from last week. A lot of the items still carry over, or sorry, last council meeting two weeks ago. I'm going to go over the stage update as to what phase we're in with the county and with the state. I'm going to talk about some of the statistics, what we've been doing with residents and businesses, our educational outreach and our plans for the city hall and city offices. So currently, part of Fresno County and part of the state, we're all together right now in stage two point five. I believe there's a couple counties that aren't included in that. I'm going to go over the list of types of businesses that are and are not included in late stage two or stage two point five. Just a reminder for residents, all of the previous rules for the stay at home order still apply. Still encouraging everyone to wear masks, limit unnecessary travel. Gatherings are still not encouraged. If you have folks crossing from different households, please try to limit that and keep social distancing in mind, wear your masks and just try to participate in recreational activities with members of your own household. So what is open? A lot of things changed in the last time since I've talked to you guys. In-store retail is now available. You can go back to your favorite stores in the downtown area and across the city. Please keep in mind, again, social distancing. The stores are allowed to implement masks at their discretion. If they require a mask, please honor that and wear a mask in that establishment. But that is not the case across the board. There you will see some differences out there in public. Currently, they're not required, but we are, again, recommending the use of masks and face coverings. Dine-in restaurants are allowed to resume services. And this means that some will choose to start services again and some are taking a little bit slower. So not every restaurant will be open right now and especially not at the capacity they were before. You're going to see a whole different landscape when you're going out to dine. Please be patient with the workers as they're also trying to figure out how to navigate COVID and maintain social distancing, keeping everyone safe while being able to serve those delicious meals that we've all been pining for. Hair salons and barbers, very excited to have some of those back open this week. It is one of the sections of the economy that is required to wear a mask, both for the customer and for the worker. And this is really because it's a higher risk for transmission type of business. You're face to face with someone, you're, there's no way to take a six-foot stance away from your customer. There's going to be a lot of implementation of different cleaning protocols, both with the dine-in restaurants and with the hair salons and barber shops. There is a form that needs to be completed and put on file with the county. Highly recommend reading the industry guidance documents, taking a look at the checklist specific to each of those industries and then completing that form, keeping in mind that all businesses need to perform a risk assessment. They need to train their employees, establish screening and control measures. You know, if we need to taper back, that's what that means by control measures. If we need to revert back to earlier stage two, being ready and being prepared for when and if that might happen. Disinfecting all around. Supplies are still a little bit hard to get, I'm hearing from businesses. So some may take it slower in opening just because they're not able to secure supplies. Continuing on to what is not open, this is the same list that you saw at the last council meeting. A lot of situations with a large group of people such as nightclubs, concert venues, festivals, these places are going to remain closed for a while. This includes public pools, we've had questions about that. And also gyms are in this category as well. So gyms will still be closed. Bars and lounges, all of that remains closed. With the county, we've got a, an updated little chart that we can view at covidnineteen.ca.gov. That is the state website. When you click on our county, you can see how many cases we've had in the last fourteen days. The percent per one, one thousand residents that are contracted, contracting the virus have COVID. And just letting you know, we're continuing to work with the county. We have a few things that are going to be happening soon, starting tomorrow when we meet with the county. I believe we'll be talking to their senior epidemiologist. And we'll be having discussions with them in our liaisons about the data that's available, what that means for us and how we can plan our outreach strategies to businesses and different communities within Selma. The county has also agreed to provide the fire department's contact information to folks who test positive for COVID so that they can reach out to the city and let us know if they have any needs for masks or any other supportive services that that they may be missing while they are quarantining and recuperating from the virus. We're also going to identify some in-home services and see if we can partner up with some different agencies to really get more information out there directly into households. And then the county has also agreed to visit some of our larger employers, maybe ones that we're concerned about or that we feel might use a boost from extra coaching and support in completing the transition of their business into this new mode of operation. All right, county data, this is the data screen you see on the Fresno County Department of Public Health. It's got a lot of really interesting information from the breakdown of the individual cities, numbers of cases to what our total is across the county. It also has a gender and race and ethnicity breakdown in the bottom left corner. As you can see, the instances are higher among the Hispanic population, but also slightly higher with with females and with males, but it's still about equal on both sides. And countywide is the same with Selma, we're seeing a lot of cases that are being contracted from close contact and community spread. These are our local statistics as of today. We did get an update this morning, we're at a hundred and seventy-four total cases. Thankfully, thirty-six have recovered. Still just one at travel related. And again, most of our contacts are, are contaminations are viral infections are coming from close contact and community spread. Let me tell you what those mean. Close contact is anything within six feet for longer than fifteen minutes. If you're not able to get that social distance between you and someone else and you're chatting for a while, you're not wearing masks, it's likely that you could count that person as a close contact. This happens a lot within the same household, same workplaces, celebrations, parties, you know, any, anytime you're going to be spending time typically indoors with people that are typically you know. Community spread is going to be on the other end. People you don't know, that's where you might be picking it up from a grocery store or just being out in public and spending a little bit too much time close to someone else. Let's say like the protest over the weekend, that would potentially bring community spread versus the close contact where it's typically someone that you know. So with education and outreach for economic development, it's been a lot of outreach, particularly in the areas that have changed recently, such as places of worship, the salons and barbers and restaurants who have all had changes within the last couple of weeks about how and when they can operate, just getting them the flyers and information about how they can safely return to business as normal. There's a lot of general business outreach as well, continuing the communication outward to the folks who have previously contacted the city for support. There was also a grant from the county of Fresno called the Hub Grant. And that was five thousand dollars distributed via lottery. The application just closed today and I'm very excited to see which businesses are able to secure that. I know we had many that applied. Since our last visit with the council, it's been thirty-four site visits between myself and Code going out to all of these different businesses who've seen these recent changes in our stages and supporting them with information and flyers and all the different community resources, such as testing, information on social distancing, whatever it is that they need. We're taking care of that in the site visits and again, communicating via email. Senior meals continue to be a focus for us. Vulnerable population, we really want to take care of them. We've been applying for funding. We've started a survey to help prioritize and figure out other needs that they may have. And super thankful for all of the community donations that have come in to help us feed the seniors over the next couple of months. And fire department, police department have helped out again with distributing masks and flyers at a couple of locations. Sierra Market and Walmart were a couple of targets in the last week. As far as our city facilities go, we know it's getting hot. So we have our senior center is a cooling shelter. And when the temperature is over a hundred and five degrees, and that's just a projected temperature for that day, the safe shelter will be open. People will be spaced out socially distant. They'll be wearing masks and we'll be sanitizing in between each family's or group sitting at each table. This is open to anyone in the public, not just seniors. This is a place to go and be chilled out and cooled down from the extreme high temperatures. Now that we're all home quite a bit more, I know those energy bills are going up. So we're anticipating seeing good usage in this. There's also modifications to our lobby. You'll see there's a whole rack of COVID resources. Mainly that's going to be updated with the businesses that are experiencing change within this, this week or last couple of weeks. And then all of the flyers that businesses and residents can put up in their homes or share with their neighbors or take to their workplaces. Definitely a resource for folks to come in and grab these things and take them with them and help educate the community. Of course, you can get any of that emailed to you. If you get ahold of us at City Hall, we're glad to to send that info out. But if you want to stop in and grab that info, we have it available. This helps keep our staff safe and at the social distance from the public who are coming in and dropping off permit information or paying fees. We are still doing some amount of business within City Hall. A lot of it's moved to appointment only, but for those who are showing up and it's hot outside, we have place for you to sit. We have a place for you to get information safely. So just recapping what we've done, so the facility modifications to our city hall, continuing to coordinate with the county and other agencies. There's a lot of community-based organizations that are out there and ready to help. So we're taking a look at which ones could really help us out in Selma with educating the public. Industry-specific outreach, again, that's the barber shops and the restaurants and our faith-based communities, getting them ready and set up to to start operating as normal. And general public outreach events, funding opportunities for senior meals as well as other infrastructure projects. We are making way on our website. We hope that that allows us to continue to provide these services in a safe, distant, user-friendly method that we we don't currently have. And we're really looking forward to implementing that and being able to have this new mode of great customer service through our online portal. We are looking at FEMA reimbursements. Just not sure exactly how much that's going to be at this time. But that concludes my presentation. And do we have any questions?
Thank you, Tracy, I do have one question. In regards to working with the county, do they have a contact tracing team? Or is that? Is there any contact tracing done in Fresno County? And if so, are they coming to Selma, how often if they are?
Yeah, so the contact tracing, from what I understand, is mainly with, within the county, with their existing employees. They are treating folks how to do that. And we had some previously that were doing contact tracing, but they're upping that and repositioning folks. Excuse me, I believe the last count was around a hundred in the county and within the county that are ready to go as contact tracers. And then they're looking for those partner organizations, the hospitals, the I believe, community centers and other entities that can help out with contact tracing on the local level. There is some responsibility within businesses to assist in contact tracing, such as with the hairdressers, they do have to keep information for everyone they serve. Walk-ins, they're going to have to take a name and phone number at least, just in case anything happens that we're able to track those folks coming in through that business.
Okay, and thank you. Councilman Robertson?
Tracy, what's stage three and how far are we away from going into that?
Oh, I love that question. The stages are really hard to predict how far out they are. And we've seen some things move forward very quickly. I think we were all caught off guard by barber shops and hairdressers being allowed to open up. We weren't expecting those until stage three and here they are in the middle of stage two. So it could potentially just be a few weeks. I really don't have a clear answer on that, but I'm hoping within a few weeks. And those are going to be businesses where you're going to see more mass gatherings. So sporting events, concerts, gyms and some of our, you know, high-touch services, like our beauty salons that do eyebrows or eyelashes and nails, those are going to be in later stage three.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Have we opened the senior center for the cooling center? Did we open that last week?
It, it was open, I believe, two days last week for the two days that it was projected to be over a hundred and five.
Okay, did we get anybody?
You know, I'm not sure, Michael oversees that, maybe he can provide comment if he's available.
Okay, and then so how late is it open until?
Yes, can you hear me?
There's Mike.
Hi, yeah, we were open two days last week. We're getting about five to six seniors each day. It's from two P M. to eight P M. And we are projecting to open this Thursday because it's supposed to be one oh six.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
One more question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, Tracy, on the the barber shops and the beauticians, now is the, is the county laying some guide, a health department, I should say, health department laying some guidelines on these areas that are, how would I say, very critical, touchy, touchy situations?
Yes. Just about every industry has a general guideline document that's specifically tailored to that industry. There's also a checklist that was provided by, can't remember what department it is, Department of Cosmetology. Very thorough, very thorough, the details in it are really specific. A lot of barbers are offering to text their clients and make sure the clients aren't coming in when other clients are there so that it's, you know, no contact between customers. There's a lot of, a lot of very detailed items that they do have to consider.
Now, is, is somebody monitoring that, you know, stop by and just to monitor check, see if they're in compliance and going by these guidelines?
Yeah, so first step was to reach out to them, provide them with the county documents so that they can read and prepare on identifying any issues when I was in the businesses to say, you know, you should be wearing a mask when you're doing this or you shouldn't be open right now because you didn't complete the form. Next step will be going back and checking in on those businesses to see if they've been able to submit the form. If they've had any issues with that, I'll support them through that. And then potentially just spot checking because we have had issues with businesses operating with windows closed or with curtains up and just cutting hair in the dark in the back. So we will be spot checking, probably unannounced on, on the city end, just to help out with that. It is a high risk for transmissions, we do want to be careful with the barbers and hair salons.
Okay, thank Tracy, I answered the question. Thank you.
Is there any other questions for council? Okay. Thank you, Tracy, very much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll move on to our second presentation of from Townsend Public Affairs. Do we have anybody from Townsend on the line?
Yes, yeah, my name is Anna Karen Cervantes and I believe, Rena, you said you could put up our slides, right? Yeah.
Hello, Anna Karen, nice to speak with you again.
Yeah, nice to speak with you too. Yeah, just to introduce myself a little bit to everybody else who I haven't had the pleasure yet to speaking with. My name is Anna Karen Cervantes and I am here with Townsend Public Affairs to give you all an update on the work that we have been doing on behalf of the city for the last several months. So I have the pleasure of working with Richard and with the city's great staff on a lot of the grant writing work that you guys do. And we're working really hard to, you know, get funding for all of the city's great projects. And there's been a lot that we've been doing the last several months and several other projects that we have in the works for the coming months. And we're excited to give you a bit of an update on, in summary of everything that we have been working on. So with that, Rena, if you want to go to the next slide. So this summer side, it's just to give you a list of basically all of the grants that have been submitted since Richard was last here at the city to speak with you all. I believe that was in July. And a couple of these are programs that were in progress at that time. So including the first two on this list, which we will go into a little bit greater detail. And all of the others are programs and applications that have been submitted more or less from the fall onward. If you want to go to the next slide. To start, and this is one that we are very excited about, and I think folks at the city are very excited about as well. So when Richard last presented the application for the Rockwell Pond Project to the statewide heart program round three was still in progress. It's one that we submitted last year in the It's one that we submitted last year in the summer on August 5th. The site visit notification for that came through towards the end of the month in October, I believe, and was scheduled for November 19th. And so at that time, a representative from the Department of Parks and Recreation came down to the city to do a hands-on visit at the project location. Richard was there, a couple of representatives from the city were there just to answer any questions that the department might have had and provide any updates to components of the application, like the project timeline or any other of the details that may have been changed or updated in the couple of months between August and November. And it was a very competitive program, so the it was basically a 10 to 1 ratio in terms of the funding requested versus the funding available for this program. So we were very excited to be notified in towards the end of February that the city was awarded a little over $4.4 million through this application to create a new park at the Rockwell Pond Park location. And so we are, like I said, really excited that we're able to secure this funding through a great collaboration with the city staff and representatives and, you know, make sure that some of this funding came came to the city. And really excited to move forward with this project and continue to work with you guys on hopefully a lot more big successes like this one. And then around that same time, moving on to the tobacco grant program, that's one that was submitted a little bit earlier in July. So this is a program through the State Department of Justice and applications are typically due annually in the summer, and Richard worked with the city to submit an application for funding to augment some activities and secure funding for a new officer position, and we did have $282,000 more or less awarded for that application. So we're really excited about these wins, and I think these are some really successful, the product of, like I said, all of the city's effort and the great collaboration that we have been able to work on over the last couple of months. Going to the next slide. And from here on out, most of these are applications that have been submitted, and a lot of them are at varying levels of review, so not we, not all of them we have heard back from. So for example, the recreational chosen greenways grant is an application was submitted for the Orange Avenue Trail Project back in October in the amount of a little bit over $1.5 million. This was through the California Department or California National Resources Agency. And so their application process is a little bit different from other agencies in that they do a three-step process. And so the first step is submitting your project proposal that gives a description of your project, a explanation of all of the benefits that it's going to provide, a basic or initial cost estimate for what you're hoping to achieve with your project, as well as some very limited documentation, including some site photos and depending on the program, sometimes they might ask for like a site plan and some other supporting documentation. The next step after that, after the agency does their review of all of the applications that they receive is that they invite a selection of applicants to participate with the agency in a site visit. And so that's step two of their process. And originally, these site visits were scheduled to start taking place around March. But with everything that, you know, you all well know happened in the last couple couple of months, the timeline for that has had to be postponed, just because of the nature of the visits that it's, you know, a group of people getting together and they're always in person. And so those have been postponed, and the agency has not yet released a new timeline as to when those will be taking place. But we expect that it should be, again, depending on how all of the reopening progresses, we're hoping that those would be able to take place later in the summer and potentially into the fall. Hope to hear back that the city will be receiving a site visit for this project and we'll be making sure to work with the agency when we receive that notice to put together an excellent visit for them and make sure that we basically roll out the red carpet for their staff and give a really great overview of what the project is going to achieve. The next one is through the Department of Housing and Community Development. Oh, if you could go back to the previous slide, Rena. Yeah, so the SB2 Planning Grant Program. So this is one, like it isn't the title, is funded through the SB2 Housing Legislation that was passed in the legislature a couple of years ago. And so it provides funding for planning of activities that will accelerate housing. This was funding that was awarded on a non-competitive formula basis. Richard worked with the city to submit an application for the city's allocation of $160,000 for some of these housing acceleration activities. And the award for that, I believe, is still pending. I know the city has been doing a lot of work over the last several months to get its housing element back into compliance and housing element compliance was one of the requirements for this program. And so if your housing element was still in that update and getting into compliance was still underway when this was due back in November, you were still eligible to submit an application. But that is what has caused a little bit of delay in getting that award authorized. Like I said, it's non-competitive and it's formula-based, so this is funding that the city will definitely be receiving, hopefully in the next couple of months. Now, let's go to the next slide. This one is through the Fresno Council of Government, so this is through the Measure C Transit Oriented Development Program. The application that we submitted back in February was for the McCall and Nelson in Phil Development Project, so it's a 20-unit apartment complex that is underway at the, at this location at McCall and Nelson. And the application was requesting funding to opt for a portion of the development fees that the developer is going to be responsible for as part of this development. So we submitted that back in February, we then put together a presentation to the Fresno COG and the Scoring Committee for this program last week on the 27th. And that meeting was also delayed by a couple of times, by several weeks, it had to be rescheduled, and so we finally had the opportunity to present last week. Unfortunately, we were not selected for funding through this program, but we did have, I think, a very helpful call with Fresno COG staff earlier today, and they gave us some really helpful and very specific feedback on what could be done to the application to make it more competitive. As far as what the program is looking to fund, there are some challenges just with the nature of the project. One that they, the staff mentioned that is a challenge is just the fact that it's a market rate development as opposed to an affordable development in the sense that or with the definition of affordability where you have, you know, deed-restricted units or, you know, rent limits and and factors like that. And so that was a bit of a challenge, but there are other revisions that we expect to make for the resubmission of this application during the next solicitation that is expected to open up in January of next year. So this is also an annual program that we look forward to applying to again. Another one that is still pending is application through FEMA's Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. So this is one that we were successful with, I mean, in working with the city to secure this funding during the last cycle through a regional application. This year's application was just for the city and so with no co-applicants, no partners in the application, and the funding requested was to purchase new heart monitors for the fire department. Since the the need is that the department has several heart monitors that are aging and you know, it's going to get to the point where it's more expensive to be doing the maintenance and uptake for those as opposed to getting new monitors that will better meet the needs of the department. And so that's an application that we submitted back in March in the amount of $74,960. And notifications for awards are expected later this year in the fall. I believe September is the date that FEMA has given, but that's subject to changes, so we'll keep it to the fall. Then the next slide. Another one that we worked on a couple of months ago in March is through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, and so this was the Rural Business Development Grant. Through with this one, and this is the first application that I had the opportunity to work on with Tracy, who's been a great partner in a lot of these applications that we've worked on. So this one, we requested funding for the downtown Selma Business Improvement District Usability Study. So the vision being that if the city is able to secure funding for this study, this will be a really important first step in moving forward potentially with the creation of a business improvement district to, you know, get some investment into the historic downtown Selma area. You know, improvements like facade improvements and upgrades and just other beautification elements that will revitalize the area and help spur more economic development activity there. And so that is one that we submitted in mid-March on March 13th, requesting $45,000. And so we'll be checking with USDA to, you know, kind of keep tabs on where they are in their review process, and we hope to hear back about that application in the next couple of months. Another one that we worked on, had the opportunity to work with the police department on this one, was through the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control Alcohol Police and Partnership Grant. And so through this one, we requested funding to support enforcement activities around the sale of alcohol to minors. And so we requested some funding for training and for supporting some positions in the department that would be, you know, partly dedicated to enforcement activities around alcohol sales to minors. And that's one that we submitted towards the end of March. Almost $36,000 requested through that application. This one was actually a resubmission from one that Richard worked on with the fire department last year, and we had some revisions and some new information that we were able to incorporate into the application to hopefully strengthen it. And we are hoping to hear back about that one as well in the next couple of months. This next one is one that, you know, came came about as a result of all of the COVID-19 events, and this is, it was funded through the CARES Act that was passed in Congress at the end of the month in March. And so this is the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program through the U.S. Department of Justice. It's very similar to the Burn JAG Allocation Grant Program that the city receives every year, and so the the formula basis for this funding, because this was another formula-based, non-competitive program. So it was based on the allocations that the city received or typically receives through the Burn JAG program. And so what we worked with the police department to request for this application was funding for some of the PPE purchases that the fire, or not, sorry, not the fire, that the police department has had to purchase, you know, in order to protect officers during their enforcement activities these last couple of months, as well as for a new, a new vehicle for the police department. And so that's one that we submitted on April 28th, and the city received notice of approval of the award a couple of weeks ago in in May in the amount of $58,714. And so the department will be moving forward with those purchases in the next couple of months. The last one that when, I think this is the most recent one that we submitted a couple of weeks ago, was another CARES Act program. And so the National Endowment for the Humanities received about $75 million to be used nationwide through their allocation in the CARES Act to support humanities institutions as they, you know, a lot of them, especially nonprofits and other city and smaller cultural institutions are really struggling and really hurting right now. And so this funding was geared towards humanities institutions and institutions supporting some of the arts, and we submitted worked with the Parks Department to submit an application to support activities at the Selma Art Center. So specifically to create a SAC on air podcast that would go into production starting later this month. This is a very short grant, something I should mention, is that it's a six-month performance period. And so the application requested funds to create a podcast that would help bring some of the most beloved and you know, most important work that the Selma Art Center does and innovate and find a new way to share those activities with the community through a podcast that would include guest speakers. You know, provide some historical information about previous pandemics and how communities have responded to those and how the arts can be an avenue towards coping and towards addressing, you know, low personal and individual challenges with, you know, all of the uncertainty that we're living through. And so it's a really great project that we submitted on May 11th, and the award notifications, again, because it's such a short performance period, we're expecting to hear back about that later this month. And next slide. And then these last couple of slides are projects that are currently underway, so these applications have not been submitted, but it's just a couple of the ones that we are working on with staff currently. So the first one is through the Department of Housing and Community Development with the Local Early Action Planning Grant. So this one is very similar to the SB2 Planning Grant Program. It'll fund very similar type of planning activities that are centered around supporting cities and fostering housing and other acceleration activities. Specifically, this one a little bit more specifically around getting prepared for the upcoming Cycle 6 of RENA and the, all of the requirements that will be coming out of that. And so the city is eligible for $150,000 through this allocation program, and the allocations are based on population. Applications are being accepted over the counter until July 1st. And so we will be applying and working with staff to put together an application for using the funds to supplement the activities from the SB2 Planning Grants. And so we'll be working on that over the next couple of weeks. Next slide. This other one is a, it's a pretty big grant and one that we are excited to work on. And so this is through the State Water Resources Control Board. It's the second round of the Prop 1 Stormwater Grant Program. So there's a total of $90 million available statewide for grants that will support multi-benefit stormwater management projects that are specifically designed to capture, treat, infiltrate, or otherwise use stormwater and dry weather runoff. We had a great call with with the city staff and with a representative from the State Water Resources Control Board late last week to get up to speed on the project, where it's at right now in terms of its planning process and up to date to the work that's already been completed and the work that would need to be completed and supported with this, with this grant. And so we got some of our questions answered and are ready to work with the city's engineer on this application and working on putting this together over the next several weeks for submission by July 2nd. And it's going to be for the final phase of the Storm Brain Storage and Recharge Project in the city. And then lastly, this is another big one, and I know like one that Mayor Franklin, we've talked about a little bit, and one that we are hoping to collaborate with Chris Com on as well. And so this is an application through the EDA's Public Works Program. So this program provides financial assistance to economically distressed communities for investments that support both construction, non-construction, planning, and technical assistance in revolving fund projects. This is a program that is open year-round, so it's accepted on a rolling basis. One important update is that the program received an additional $1.5 billion allocation through the CARES Act, which is really significant amount of funding. It's about five times the amount of funding that this program typically receives on an annual basis. And so that's really great for us because it means that there is more available funding to support the project that we are working on with the city, which is an application for the Northwest sewer and the West sewer areas to support bringing infrastructure there to, for the future construction of Selma Grove and several other projects that are in the works in that area of the city. Because this is also a pretty hefty application and has some technical components that will take some time to put together, we are probably a couple of months out from being able to submit this, and it's also one that we'll be working on very closely with the city's representative through the Economic Development Agency to make sure that we are doing everything that we need to do to put together a strong application and hopefully get this submitted and leverage relationships with Congressman TJ Cox as well, who who has expressed his interest and his commitment to advocating for this on behalf of the city. And so we're really excited to continue to work on this with the city over the coming months. And also just to give some perspective in summary, this is my last slide, but and between these last three grant programs, I think we're looking at somewhere in the range of six to seven million dollars at the very least in terms of of grant funding that we will be applying for. You know, so it's a significant amount of funding that we are working our hardest to, you know, make sure that we're putting together strong applications and securing those. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions that you all may have about the work that we've done so far and what we have coming down the pipeline.
Thank you for the presentation, Anna Kara. And I know it's a unique time, at the same time that money is being taken away, other money is becoming available. So I think it's important that both the city and Townsend and even our other largest conference, that we all work together to make sure that as these new opportunities arrive, that we're able to work together and make some beneficiary and benefit. Put us in a, in a better chance to recover from this looming economic crisis that we're all going into. So I want to thank you for the presentation, and with that, I would ask if any of the council members have any comments or question? Councilmember Trillo?
Yeah, congratulations. That was good, good, good presentation.
Yeah, congratulations. That was good, good, good presentation. The question I have is, will you be able to put this on a formal spreadsheet with time, times and dates of when you'll be submitting these, what the you know, the, the, the ending date is so we can kind of track it so we don't lose. I mean, this is, this is a good presentation. It's just really lengthy. And I just want to make sure we could keep track of some of these and kind of see if we can, you know, as a whole, as a council whole, we can make sure we push these along and see if we can make sure that we're, we're on it. And it'd be nice if we could get some kind of a spreadsheet giving us, you know, hey, here, here are all the, the grants we're, we're applying for. Here's the deadline. And what can we do to make, make sure that we're working as a whole team to make sure we complete this?
Yeah, absolutely. And we do have a monthly report that we share with staff every month that summarizes, you know, at the end of the month, everything that has been submitted to date indicates which ones are, have been awarded, which ones are pending, which ones are still in the works as far as, you know, developing the application and pre-submission. So that's one way that we do work to keep track of all of this activity. And like you said, make sure that, you know, nothing is falling through the cracks and just keeping track of all the deadlines and, you know, what's been submitted, what's pending, what is still being worked on. But we, we happy to work with staff to, you know, communicate or figure out the best way to communicate that to you. And if like a spreadsheet or a different format would be more helpful or a better way to present that information to you, definitely do that as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Robertson?
I want to say thank you, Anna Karen, for your report. Are you going to be our representative, our point person with Townsend from now on?
Yeah, so Richard and I still, we're working as partners on, on with the city, but day to day I, I am the main point of contact right now for the, for the city.
Thank you. And then I think it's critical that we get this rebuilding money from the CARES Act for the, to rebuild after the COVID nineteen crisis, especially the Prop one stormwater is going to really help if we can get that because the state is trying to claw back some of the money that the city received or all the money the city received courtesy of State Senator Melissa Hurtado last year in the budget. So it's going to be even more critical to get as much money as we can out of that. I would also like to see the teamwork with the Chris Comm on the EDA Public Works Program. Very important. We talked about that last year as well. And would like to see Chris Comm do what Townsend is doing and come give us a presentation with their spreadsheet and their timelines as well. Finally, the transit oriented development. That was a near miss this year. I understand we missed, we needed to score seventy. The city received a sixty seven. I know last year when I was the city's COG representative, we received TOD funding to move the transit station last year. And we didn't get it this year. I understand because we did do what was recommended and we applied for an infill grant. But we didn't check it out with the developer that they would not alter their deed to incorporate affordable housing. So we really, it looks like the city went into this with very little opportunity to get this funding. We went into the right area of funding. And I remember last year pushing very hard for this. And we received that one. But this year, because we didn't go in with that understanding with, that the developer would do what we needed to do to get that funding. We weren't eligible for that. So in the future, it sounds great that we're going to go after, you know, TOD funding again neck for the next cycle. But I think it comes down to picking the projects. And if we go into infill, you know, just make sure that the research is done so that, you know, we're, the city gives itself every opportunity to get funding.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Any more comments? And just a little more information on that project. We went with Nelson because it's the only project that we have for infill. That would meet that criteria to apply for. So even though it was a long shot, it was an opportunity worth taking. And I think staff did a great job on getting close and, and even even opportunity. So that goes back to our sewer infrastructure, why it's so important, because we need more projects so that we can apply for more, more opportunities. So thank you again, Anna Kara. And with that, we'll move on to consent calendar. Okay. Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar category are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For a purpose of discussion, any council member may have an any item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The council then can approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Is there any council members who wish to remove anything from the consent calendar? Councilman Robertson?
Like to remove items one A and one D.
Okay. Is there anybody else with items removed? Okay, do I have a motion?
Items one B and C.
I'll make a motion to accept the other items, C, D.
Okay, we have a motion already from Councilman Robertson to do that. Jim, would you like to be the second?
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Robertson?
Hi.
Councilmember Avalos?
Hi.
Councilmember Truheal?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gera? I see she's still muted. I'm asked, if you can look at your screen, I'm asking you to unmute.
Hi.
Perfect. Thank you. Mayor Franco?
Hi.
Okay. Item one A. Councilman Robertson, any questions?
Item one A, consideration of purchase for furniture and emergency system in new police station department. So my question on this is, how long will these items take to get here? How long will they take to be installed? And when will the dispatch center be operational in the new police station?
Yeah, council member, mayor and council members. So to that topic, some of the items have different delay times. As far as the furniture, there is some time as far as ordering, getting a process up to like six weeks, I believe. The biggest lag time is actually going to be in the dispatch center, the, for the, from the AT&T, we're looking at potentially a possible six months. That's just an estimate at this time. We don't have a full timeline as far as that yet. We're looking at approving the quote. They can process your order and they can give us a better timeframe at that point in time. They are saying an estimate of six months, so potentially.
So the, the dispatch will continue to be in the old police station until the new dispatch center is ready?
That's correct. Depending on when we actually receive the item, we are projecting it could potentially come after the point of opening.
And then finally, is this within the original eight million dollar budget that the voters approved?
It is. Even the grant was actually part of the proposal as well. So it is part of the initial budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the holdup because of AT&T or is the holdup because of the project?
It's AT&T. That, that's just their timeframe.
Thank you.
Any more, any more questions on this item? Okay, with that, Scott, you want to do item D, then we'll approve both of them after your questions.
Item one D, page eighty three. The vendor name is VKS fabrication awning covers for Proterra charges, seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty, sixty eight. What are Proterra charges?
Who's actually the employee doing it?
George Sipon?
Oh, that's, there's going to be a transaction for the, the transit. It's, it's all going to be transit related items for that individual. Proterra, Proterra is actually one of their vendor products. And I think it goes one of the larger budgets.
I didn't recognize the name, that's why I asked.
Yeah. Do you have any other questions?
Okay, I have one too. And there's two charges here, same person. And it's for Mercedes Benz of Fresno. You can see the purchase of compressor stock. One's for sixteen thirty two, fifty eight, and one's for a thousand, eighty eight, thirty nine.
Okay. I'm sorry, I can barely understand your question. I understand the vendor and which item you're selecting, but what was the question again?
I'm just questioning the charges to Mercedes Benz.
Okay.
We could have purchased here locally, like from Fresno.
Most likely no, that particular vendor is only going to be in Fresno. Transit as well as the other departments try and purchase most as local as possible. A lot of the products that do come through transit are going to be outsourced into friend of Fresno vendors or some other vendors outsourced for the bigger, bigger items such as Mercedes Benz of Fresno. It all depends on the bus themselves. Normally, a lot, a lot of the larger vehicles are going to have to come from outside vendor of Salma, just because we don't have that particular vendor here. As you can see from the transactions, the smaller vehicles and a lot of the miscellaneous stuff that they can get. They are getting local, for example, Les Schwab, O'Reilly's, Home Depot, Napa. So they are purchasing a lot of the smaller components. A lot of the bigger components that are more specialized are going to have to come outside of the city of Selma.
Okay. And I just have one more on, on page eighty. Which is the first one for one eight hundred boarder? It's one, five rows?
Yeah.
Just tell me what's that, was that for?
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you, but I believe you said, what is that for? That item is actually for one eight hundred boarder as a vendor that we utilize to clean up properties and secure properties. So that property address is actually went through an abatement process. So we actually, I believe, were just cleaning up the property and securing it as well. The property owner will then be billed if there is no payment following it up from that transaction. We do submit the invoice to them, which they've already been billed. They will then in turn go to this actual when we collect it at that point in time. That's why it's categorized as an R for reimbursement.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the items.
Second.
Okay, we have items one A and one, one D?
Ones B and C, or A and D.
A and D. Okay. Roll call please.
Councilmembers are here?
Hi.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Gera?
Hi.
Mayor Franco?
Hi. We have no public hearing, but before we begin our regular business, we're going to take a three minute break. And so we'll return at seven oh nine, seven ten. Thank you. All right, is everybody ready?
Oh, there's Scott. I didn't see you, Scott.
Yeah. City clerk, are you there, Rena?
Johnny, are you there, Johnny?
Sure am.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, I have seven eleven on my end, but we can reconvene the meeting and back to our agenda. So a regular business item, agenda item number two. Council requests to discuss placement of initiative on the November ballot to increase Measure S by half cent. But before I hand it over to staff, I understand Jim, this is your request to do this?
Yes.
Okay. Could you kind of enlighten council on your reasoning for, you think we should have this discussion at this time?
Well, I'll, I'll be honest with you guys, you know. I remember in the past when we put this to get with, when we put this measure S together, it was only, you know, half a cent and we, it was created way back then. Now, you know, the times other cities have followed our guidelines and use a, a one, you know, or more than one, the one percent. We're behind now. And the other issue is down the future, we're going to probably need another mechanism to catch up, another half a cent to catch up with the future. Creating, you know, we want to, to buy the ambulance back. Fire station needs a fire station down the road and future, you know, public safeties. Expanding the operation as far as law enforcement, as far as pushing different cameras and different residential areas where we can control the crime activity because we can't be everywhere, try to be innovative. But at the same time, I know the pandemic situation. I, I just put it out there to you guys, just let you think about down the road. I'm not saying to do it now or like when I can do it later or whatever, but right now, just think about it. You know what I mean?
Well, I mean, we, we can go and talk about it, but I mean, I don't know if
There's no action.
Increasing, hold on Jim, I'm talking, please. Let me finish. You know, both you and I have been around since the beginning of Measure S.
That's correct.
So, right. And in that time since the very beginning and today, it's raised about seventeen, over seventeen point five million dollars for our public safety. And if we want Measure S or Measure K, which is the TOT, if we really want something like that to get the most maximal out of it, I think we need to invest in our economic development because that's what feeds into that. I don't know, I just think having this discussion at this point in time is, is, is not the right avenue to take. But if, if you is, 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 is not the right avenue to take, but if you want to pursue down this avenue, we can, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, no, we have this, all I'm, I, all I did was put it up to you guys, you know, think about it, you know what I mean? And, you know, kind of digest it a little bit. I'm not saying, hey, let's do it now, or maybe, you know, do it down the road later on. You know, i- it's something that down the road is gonna be, it's gonna be needed, even with the economic development.
Well, you know, when, when the measure F is passed it, it, they didn't pull a half cent out of figure error. They, we had a specialist and consultants come and analyze our city, our population and our projected growth rate and stuff, and they determined that the half cent was the fair amount to do that would, A, help benefit and boost our public safety and at the same time, it's a fair cost to all the people who shop and come to our community. Uh, but if you, if, if, if you decided on your own that we, you need to increase a half cent because because it's time, then, uh, then we will, we'll have the discussion.
No, I'm, I'm just putting it out there for you guys to think about it right now, as, you know, as a council. And, you know, and evaluate it, because, you know, I know we have, if we didn't have a pandemic situation, it'd probably been different. But I know that we have a pandemic situation in our economic situation in our city, uh, we're gonna be struggling for some money. Uh, we're okay right now, you know, as we speak, we're okay right now, but down the road, i- it's gonna be a picture.
Right, we, we, we are going to be, next year is gonna be extremely difficult for all of us or or whoever's on council can be extremely difficult for them, but at the same time, the solution just to tax the community uh, without us rolling up our sleeves and trying to be more creative, I think it's premature to have that discussion at this time.
Oh yeah, but that's, that's what I put it for, just, it just put it on the agenda for discussion. I mean, if you guys, it's up to you guys.
All right.
As a group.
With that, I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, in, in looking at the cities in Fresno County that have a measure of the fifteen cities that do have a measure, uh, of the fifteen cities in the county, nine of them do have measures. And of those nine, seven of them are at one cent currently. Reedley just increased theirs with voter approval. And the city of Sanger has a three quarter cent sales tax measure. The city of Selma right now is at the half cent measure as was previously mentioned, so I did want to share that with you, what our neighboring cities are, are currently doing and that their communities have supported. If this is something that this council would like to consider for the upcoming ballot time, this is the time to, to put something together to get that on the ballot and Mr. Our city attorney wanted to talk a little bit more about that process and any other additional information in regard to a special measure like this. I'd open it up to him for that.
I, I, I think what Jim was attempting to convey there is that likely not a good time to be doing that. People have been hit financially hard as a result of this pandemic. And I, I think Councilman Avalos was just attempting to uh, put it out there for further discussion, I, I suppose in the future to essentially make us even with the rest of them that have followed suit after the city enacted its one half cent sales tax and have enacted by and large, one cent. Am I correct about that, Councilman Avalos?
That's correct, because really, you know, it, right now, we, I know it's a tough time, but I threw it out there for, for the future thought. We can go back to it, review it, but, you know, this, it was, uh, well put together way back then, other cities are utilizing it when we were first rolled it out, so it is effective. But, uh, and you're right, Franco, future development is, you know, important, but also uh, public safety is, is important as well, and how, how do we fund it for the future? That's another factor. And the measure S has been doing very well. We have, we have bought, you know, a street sweeper, we had our fire trucks, our ambulances. We have bought, we, we have actually been very creative without that measure S, we would probably be hurting, we'd probably be driving the old ambulances and fire trucks right now. So, I mean, we have, and we have, actually, we have stepped ahead of the game, you know, really. But this is for, you know, future thought, guys, you know, I'm not saying to throw it out right now, but hey, this is the future.
I, I would suggest, Jim, and to all of us and council, that if we really want to be serious and get the most out of our sales tax measures, which is our T O T, and the, uh, measure S that provide us extra funds to benefit our quality life in our community, that we really get serious about our capital improvement plan and get some infrastructure plans, bring some quality balanced neighborhoods here. Bring some homes, attract some businesses, our school attendance enrollment has been going down, steadily declining, businesses are leaving. And it's all relational, you know? Is it easy? No, but I think it's something that this council and future councils can do if, if we set our mind to it and, and make that a priority to work together to do that. So, uh, with that, I'll open it to the council members, uh, Councilmember Robertson.
I think member Gera was first.
Okay, uh, if you'd like to go first or Protem?
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, I'm just confused here. I mean, are we not in COVID? This is a wrong time to try to increase taxes. We have three point nine million Californians that are unemployed or jobless, not to mention, we got citizens here in Selma that are without a job and don't know if they're even going to a job. I mean, our businesses, our businesses need help. So this is not a good time to consider increasing taxes. I'm sorry, but that, this is a wrong time, maybe for the future, probably a year from now, but wrong time. The other thing is, we need to look at other venues to see how we can stabilize our economy. And I agree, we need to bring businesses, we need to bring homes, that's gonna give us more revenue. But increasing taxes right now is a wrong time, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Robertson, you wish to speak?
I would echo that, the sentiments of the mayor Protem. It's just not the time for it. I think Councilman Avalos is right, that we do need to look at the public safety tax. Just n- not now, we should look at it on the next budget cycle, um, after we weather this storm. Um, I think we also need to involve our measure S committee in this discussion, since they are very active and the oversight of the distribution of measure S, um, funds. Um, I, you know, this is just not the time, because anything that would put our businesses at a disadvantage at this point, anything, I think is something that we shouldn't be doing. Um, but I do agree, we do need to look at being in parity with the other cities. And as my final thought, I would also say, while we're looking at infrastructure, let's also look at ourselves and not go over budget on projects and stay in budget, the case in point being the police station. Uh, we went way over budget on that, let's make sure when we do and go after infrastructure, which we do need on the capital improvement program, let's make sure that we stay within our budget.
Councilmember Trillo.
So, uh, you know, being I don't even know where to begin with here. Uh, so we're asking our council to look at wanting to increase even a one, even a half percent more when we're having businesses leave. We haven't built the homes since two thousand twelve. Some of our council members went and actually asked some of our school districts as to why our budget, or why their budget was declining. When some of our homes, some of our people in our community are leaving to Kingsburg and Fowler, because there's no homes, there's no apartments, there's no jobs. We as a council, instead of asking to have the residents to foot the bill, why don't we as a council start talking about creating annual policies, future policies that inherit our infrastructure, our business development? Why don't we do the hard steps right now? Start talking about it. We give out, we, we're talking about spending money for a police station that was, what, sixty percent had asbestos? Our officers couldn't even attend, the police station, couldn't even go in the police station? We need to, as a council, start looking at what's, what we need to do to become creative. What's the creative part is making our staff and ourselves work together to plan ahead, create budgets that'll create it, our financing, we can't, we can't shoulder the whole money, we can't shoulder the whole expense, but we're gonna put that on our residents? Just because you see some money? That's the easy way. Why don't we, why don't we start talking about creating some financial structure? Budgeting, so we can say we need infrastructure for the next two to three years, budget for it. But to hand over and start talking about next, even next year or year, two years from now, saying that we're gonna go ahead and start having our residents shoulder, when we haven't even looked, have you guys looked at the actual property taxes? There's vendors, there's agencies there that are actually taking money from our residents that probably shouldn't even be taking it. In order for us to approve something for the future, let's us do our in-house and let's us do our due diligence and make sure that we have something, where we have something in place to make sure that we're not overspending and giving other agencies and make sure we have our ducks on the line before we start talking about shouldering more expenses to our residents.
Councilmember Robertson?
Let's stimulate business activity. I really agree, instead of taxing our residents and looking for revenue there, remember um, measure S has a provision in there, it says you have to spend at least a certain amount on your public safety before measure S will kick in, and they, the reason the framers did that was because they didn't want measure S used as a slush fund, as a replacement fund for public safety. We can't depend on these T O Ts and measure S as the only means of funding, you know, these programs. Public safety is our most important thing we do as a council, but the way we stimulate that and the number one way we fund public safety should be through business activity and as a business owner and as someone who paid, you know, my own money to, to support measure S in two thousand and eight, it's critically important to have the businesses drive the funding of public safety with an enhancement by measure S. Yes, we need it, but we need to encourage business activity first and foremost.
Okay, with no more comments from council, I will open it up to the public. Oh, hold on, excuse me, hold on. Councilmember Roberts, Jim?
Oh, yeah, no, I, I just threw it out, I brought to the council for future. It's, you know, I'm, I brought it to the table. You guys think about it, you know, and I, I wanted to hear you guys input. And I see that, you know, under the pandemic situation, businesses are suffering, I get, I understand that. And for free, for the, for the future, you know, we could bring this back.
Yeah, but Jim, it's just kind of what, what Councilman Trillo alluded to, you're already defaulting to raising the taxes without looking at other means first. Uh, and it's quite honestly, the timing is just terrible to even ask this question right now, it shows a lack of empathy.
I mean, if you, you know, if you feel, if you guys feel that way, that's fine, you know? The future, the future, you're gonna need some mechanism.
We're gonna need more funding in the future, that is correct, but because this is on the agenda item, I have to open it up to public. So is there anybody from the public at this time who wishes to comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, Sarah, Sarah's asking a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, my public comment.
Mayor Protem Gera, I need to ask you to unmute your line.
You know, we're talking about unf- overfunding and we're talking about, we're gonna need this. Well, now you see, do you see, Jim, John, Louis, why we shouldn't have spent that additional three million dollars on this police station? We needed the money and now we don't have it.
I want to respond to that. So about a year, about a year and a half ago or a year ago, you guys packed the house with about a hundred people in the council chambers and there was a, there was an accusation saying we're misusing public funds through the ambulance fund. What I did is I did my, I did my due diligence. I went back to the last three or five years and I, and I checked. And this council, not this council, but the council prior, was using the ambulance fund to fund the general fund. So we use some of the, we use some of the ambulance fund to take care of this police station. These are the decisions we have to take and you, and, and Mayor Protem Gera, I appreciate that you're saying that this is, this was unacceptable, but that is time, that is a discussion we can go into. But I want to say that this is one of the most crucial decisions as a, as a legislator that we needed to make in order to take care and house our police officers. That was the reason why we were able to go in July and hire another five to ten officers. That is the reason why we were able to do this, and I want to say this perfectly clear. Number one, this is, these are the steps that, that council has to do. These decisions have to be done and we did it. And I just want us in the near future to start doing our due diligence and setting policies before you start talking about raising taxes and burdening our, our residents. And as a business owner that owns three businesses and employs people, employees people, I want to tell you that, you know what, it costs and I want to make sure that we understand. So we understand and, and I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying that before you start talking about raising taxes and burdening the, the citizens of Selma, let's look and let's tighten up our belt and let's look at what we can do to help our community advance economically. And of course, safety comes first. So I, I just want to make sure we understand where I stand for that.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna send to the public, the subject, the subject is measure S raising it, it's not the police station or the cost, we're not on that subject. So, uh, Mayor Protem Gera, if you want to talk about the half cent measure S, go ahead.
No, I'm not, I'm not gonna, we already talked about that. I told you, I'm not in support of it.
Okay, uh, I know, but we're getting off, off track. You're talking about the cost of the police station when the subject is not what on.
No, because you're talking about, yes, because you're saying overfunding, you're talking about mismanagement, Trahilio's mentioning things, money shouldn't have been transferred. Okay, so now you're saying staff
We're off
transferred money illegally? I mean, he gets to say it.
You, he was responding to your comment.
Saying it.
I didn't stop you from your comment and he responded to your comment, but I need to move this forward.
Okay, move forward.
We can't get, we can't get off subject. Thank you. All right, with that, because this is on the agenda, we're going to go into uh, public comments. City clerk, at this time, is there anybody who wishes to comment on this matter?
Hi caller, this is a caller that has a line ending in four, four, one. Is there anything that you would like to discuss regarding this agenda item? Okay, going on to the next one. Hi caller, this is for the caller ending in five, seven, six. I know you mentioned that you would like to speak on agenda item number five, but is there anything that you would like to speak to regarding agenda item number two?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Hi, this is for Ms. Navarro. Ms. Navarro, this is a time for you to discuss any items. Is there anything that you wish to discuss regarding agenda item number two?
Not at the same, not at the same, thank you.
Hi, this call, this is for Ms. Solis. Ms. Solis, is there anything that you would like to discuss regarding agenda item number two with the council?
No, thank you.
No further comments.
Okay, with that, I will bring it back uh, to council, and I think there's a consensus that at this time, it's not the right time to move forward. Uh, is everybody okay with that? All right.
Okay, long as fine. You guys.
All right, with that, we're gonna move on to uh, regular business item number three. Ratification of emergency services executive order number twenty dash two temporarily, temporary suspending city regulations that would prohibit outdoor dining in order to allow restaurants to operate while also complying with social distancing requirements. City manager Galivan?
Yes, thank you, members of council. Um, on Friday, we did issue an emergency executive order that would allow restaurants to have um, additional dining outdoors in order to increase the capacity of the restaurants, because right now restaurants have been open for in-room dining, but with very limited capacity to accommodate social distancing and, uh, this new phase we're in, in the reopening process. So if a restaurant would desire to do so, they and, and may have an option to put some tables outdoors. They can propose to do so and move forward doing so if council would ratify this. And with, as long as they continue to follow some of the requirements that are outlined in the order. But it is a way in order to allow potentially restaurants to have a few more tables as they go through this process to reopen.
Okay. Is there any questions from council?
I have a question. Teresa, can you give an example to one of the local restaurants that would be utilizing like a private sidewalk or their parking lot? Are you talking more like sales restaurant that has?
That's one example that they have their own parking lot and if they wanted to increase their space and, and do something outdoor where they were cording off part of it and maybe put a barricade, it's a misters. I mean, I know it's not the best time of the year for outdoor dining that we're going into, but we wanted to give businesses the opportunity, the entrepreneurial spirit they have to see what works for them. So that would be one. Or downtown, if, you know, G's wanted to put a couple tables, small tables uh, in front of the restaurant, um, that still allowed sidewalk ADA access, that would be feasible too.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions from the council members? Councilmember Robertson?
Maybe more of a comment. I think that this is definitely called for. This time to kickstart our economy. We, we need to, as a city government, give as much incentive and as much support as we can to businesses, especially restaurants and hospitality industry, which has been hit so hard by this pandemic. Uh, I, I fully support this. I think it's really important to get restaurants to be serving safely again. Some folks don't really think safe enough to go inside. Anything you can do to increase that capacity as well? I think it's a good thing as long as, of course, the restaurant owners are doing it safely. Um, when you do, you know, convert parking spaces, as long as it's up, um, in the, you know, public interest. And, um, it does bring people in and it does so safely. I think it's a really good thing for the city.
Okay. Okay, with that, I will open it up to public comment. City clerk, do we have anybody with to comment on this matter?
Hi, this is for the caller with the line ending in four, four, one. Is there anything that you wish to speak to regarding this agenda item? Okay, thank you. Mr. Self, is there anything that you wish to comment on agenda, this agenda item?
Uh, I don't think so. Actually, all I wanted to do is talk about the district.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, this is for Ms. Navarro. Ms. Navarro, is there anything that you wish to speak to regarding this agenda item?
Um, well, I do have kind of a question. I don't know if it's allowed as a question or if it's a, a more of a comment. But on the guy, okay, it's just basically on the guidelines for the outdoor dining. Is there something already that's in place that you guys are looking at to potentially, you know, open up outdoors? I know some of the private rest, you know, the restaurants that have the private parking and stuff like that, um, it'd be easier, but something that, you know, is it, are there any guidelines that you guys have already worked on for this?
Yes, I can go ahead and answer that question. There are guidelines on page two of the of the emergency executive order and they're basically, uh, that, you know, access requiring you still have access, Americans with Disabilities Act access, ADA access, fire hydrants must remain unobstructed. Um, you have to comply with city noise regulations, um, from, you know, ensure that all trash is cleaned up at the end of the day. Provide outdoor waste recycling receptacles. The hours would be 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And there's, there's just a couple other ones. Um, it's, it's pretty nominal and also the city is here to answer any questions if a business is considering to expand their, their dining to outdoor. Please feel free to give us a call. We'd be happy to take a look at your layout or talk to you about how you're thinking about doing that and what might be, um, just to make sure that, that, uh, everything does fall into compliance and, and protect your employees and your patrons in light of, of COVID.
Okay, thank you. Just a general question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
Yes, we have one more caller. Ms. Solis, is there anything that you would like to speak to regarding this agenda item?
No, not at this.
And there are no emails.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I will bring it back to council. And unless, if somebody has a comment, I'm looking for a motion to approve this item.
I'll make that motion to approve the item three.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalos?
Hi.
Councilmember Trahil?
Uh, I'm going to go ahead and abstain from this. And I own a couple of restaurants and also I will have, just take note that I didn't make no comments and, um, I'll just abstain, please.
Mayor Franco?
Hi. Okay, next item, uh, agenda item number four. Consideration of an ordinance to approve by voters allowing a licensed gambling establishment in the city of Selma in accordance with provision of the Business and Professional Code 19960C. Introducing, introduction and first reading. Mr. Costando?
Fair members of the council, this precise ordinance has been before you previously. You actually adopted the ordinance and issued a resolution ordering an election. The, the measure failed. And Mr. Nelson, who is the opponent of this particular proposal, uh, has asked that to place it on the ballot for November. He feels that if, uh, if it is on the ballot for the presidential election, uh, because of the higher voter turnout, uh, he will do better. Uh, and he's also prepared to hire a political consultant to, um, fine tune his marketing effort with respect to the proposed adoption of the ordinance. There is in the ordinance, a provision, uh, that allows the city to adopt a resolution that probably, uh, imposes a percentage tax against the revenues of the card room. So it does serve the purpose of generating, uh, money for the city. And he is simply asking that you consider once again, uh, placing this before the voters so that, uh, the card room can, uh, become a reality. I'm, I'm not summarizing the, uh, the ordinance in great detail because I think you're all pretty fairly familiar with this. Having gone through this before, uh, Mr. Nelson has provided, and I believe I provided in your packet, a agreement by Mr. Nelson to pay all of the cost incurred uh, in connection with this, uh, this election, should you decide to place it on the ballot. And he has received, I believe, just Friday, uh, the bill for the prior, um, measure that failed, uh, that bill is in the neighborhood of about $38,000. Point you out to the, uh, uh, the estimate of the cost that we received from, uh, the county elections office. Uh, at this, for the prior election, the estimate was between 18 and 25,000. As it turned out, the bill for the county elections office was 31,000. So I would, I would point you to the current estimate for this election, which is between 5,07500. And I would suggest that you're probably looking at a more realistic estimate if you add 10% or more, uh, to that cost. But thi- this is simply being brought to you as the first introduction and first reading of the ordinance, simply because that's what it takes to put something on the ballot. You have to both adopt an ordinance and a resolution ordering, uh, the election. And, uh, in order to adopt the ordinance, you need two meetings, one of which is a public hearing. So we would, if you approve the introduction or the first reading of this ordinance, uh, we can bring back to you for the public hearing, most likely on July 6th. A resolution that places the measure exactly the same measure that you, uh, previously put on the ballot. Uh, and this ordinance, uh, for placement on the ballot on November 3, 2020. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, thank you, Neil. So just to summarize, this is basically like last time, Mr. Nelson's going to pay any fees and this is just a ballot to see if the community wants a gambling establishment.
That is exactly right.
Okay, so nothing has changed from the last attempt.
Nothing has changed other than we tried it in March and it failed and chances in November are going to be better.
If, if Mr. Nelson wishes to try again, that's, I guess that's his prerogative, but, uh, any comments from council? Yeah, Protem Garrett?
Is Mr. Dwight Nelson present?
I don't believe he is. He wasn't on the phone when the clerk went through.
He's on the line. We do have representatives.
Oh, hello, Mr. Nelson. Would you like to elaborate on your, um, business? And give us a little more information and, and explain the revenue it's going to bring to Selma?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, okay, let me explain what happened back in March because, uh, or was it March? No, it, the last election, it gets a little bit confusing. Uh, what, what, what we went wrong in, in putting the ballot, putting this on the ballot, there was supposed to be a pro statement explaining the, the measure. And, uh, because this election, the, the, this early election this year was basically all done by voter mail. If you didn't have that, this understanding, that description of what this whole thing was about, it was really at a disadvantage for ever passing because all it said was, uh, do you voters want to have a gambling establishment in Selma? Uh, it didn't say why it's good or anything else. So it was a failure on our part. Um, obviously I've never done it before and my attorney that put it together hadn't done it before either. So we made a mistake. So this time, if it's allowed to be back in the ballot, there'll be a proper statement on the ballot, which again, there's going to be mail-in that will explain to the voters what it's about, why we're doing it. The, the information that what this does and is done for other communities like Clovis, like Fresno, Visalia, Goshen, I mean, there's, there's 72, 72 different statewide, uh, privately owned establishments like this. And, uh, they generate a tremendous amount of money for the local city that the, um, gambling, gambling, um, facility is located in. Our people that have done this study project between 500,000 and $1 million a year would be created for the city of Selma's general fund. And it's, it's a big number plus, of course, that's just the tax that we're talking about. That doesn't count the people that are given employment, um, the people that will be coming in to our community, staying in our hotels. Again, they'll be paying the hotel tax. So it just, it really multiplies the amount of money that can be generated and is generated by these establishments. Um, our facility is ideal for it. We have the room, we have the space. Um, and it would just be a great thing for Selma if we can properly educate the voters in Selma as to what it's really all about, which unfortunately we failed to do last time. So given the chance, we're going to do a better job at it and, and, and do it that way. Yes, and we just did receive the bill, which was $38,000, which I was not anticipating it being that high, but I get it. So we'll be paying that. Uh, in the November election, obviously, the bill we're looking now, we're going to be 10 to $12,000. So that will be uh, much better. But then of course, we'll be spending more money through an education process. We're going to hire an outside consultant, which, you know, again, we didn't think we had to do that. Uh, but obviously we, we just did it wrong. And the first time, I guess, you know, you learn by your mistakes and so if you allow us to go forward, we'll, we'll do it better this time and try to get this approved. And then again, remember, it's probably a two or three year period before you would ever see any type of, you know, uh, facility open because then now we have to go through the state process and that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother thing.
Right. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Does any, anyone else from council have any questions or comments? Okay, with that?
I have a comment.
Councilmember Robertson?
A, um, comment in terms of doing it differently this time. I appreciate what Mr. Nelson is saying about, you know, doing it the first time. It takes a while to learn how to do something, to do it well. And going back to the second time as the council, um, looks forward tonight, I would just say on the sign, they were put in a whole bunch of illegal places for Measure L. Last go around, I really hope Mr. Nelson's consultant will take a look at that and just, just be respectful of where the signs go because I, that could have, you know, been off putting to a number of people as well and, uh, certainly an area for improvement in the next campaign. Thank you.
Understood.
Okay, uh, if there's not any comments or questions, I'm going to open this up to the public. If, city clerk, is anyone wishing to speak on this matter?
Hi, this is for the caller with the line ending in four, four, one. Would you like to comment on agenda item number four? Hi caller, you are unmuted. Okay. Mr. Self, I just want to ask you if you would like to comment on agenda item number four?
Uh, no, I'll comment on that probably when we get to the district.
Understood, thank you. Hi, this is for Ms. Navarro. Ms. Navarro, would you like to comment on agenda item number four?
No comment at this time.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. Solis, would you like to comment on agenda item number four?
No, thank you.
Thank you. And we have no emails at this time.
Okay, with that, I will return it to council and then, um, unless there's any further discussion, we can get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I was.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jim. I'll, I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Trahil?
Hi.
Mayor Franco?
Hi.
Councilmember Avalos?
Hi, she's going to paper it.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garrett?
Hi.
All right, thank you everyone. And with that, we will move on to our last agi- item, our last agenda item for regular business, item number five. Consideration of an ordinance providing for elections of members of a legislative body for the city by districts of five districts. And repealing the ordinance providing for election of members by four district and then within elected. election of members by four district and then with an elected mayor. Introduction and first reading. Mr. Costanzo?
Member of the council, this has been before you previously as well. This is simply an ordinance that would necessarily replace the ordinance that the council adopted on December two of twenty nineteen, providing for the election of the council with a mayor at large and for council districts. If you were to approve this ordinance in addition to a resolution that would be when we set this ordinance for public hearing, placing that on the November three, twenty twenty ballot, voters would, if the voters approved that, the matter would come back to the newly-elected council. Following that election, the election would go on for November three, twenty twenty, selecting two members of council from two different districts, and one mayor elected at large. If the voters were to approve this five district ordinance, that would then come back to that council for development of a district map, which has to be developed in such a way that the population in each district is roughly equal. Once that occurs, this, this ordinance would really only take effect in November of twenty twenty-two, when there would be a, the next election of council members. That election would be for members of three districts instead of two, because at that point, the mayor-at-large's election or term of office will be coming to an end. As I said, this has been before you previously, so I'm assuming you understand what this is doing. The council specifically asked that this be brought back for placement on the ballot or possible placement on the ballot for November as opposed to March, given the, the lower cost of placing a measure on the ballot for this November. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer.
Thank you, Neil. Is there any question from council? Councilmember Robertson?
Neil, how will the ballot item be worded? Is there statutory wording that it has to follow?
There is, there's precise statutory wording that must be followed. I don't have that in front of me, but it is exactly the same as what we were proposing back in March, and essentially, it just asks the voters to vote yes or no to the question of whether or not the city council of the city of Selma shall be elected according to districts of five districts.
So I remember when Councilman George Rodriguez brought up the DOT, and it went on the ballot, I, I think it came back, and you told him you would strike at us, so we couldn't advocate or be dense the ballot. If this was on the ballot in November, can council members from the DA's take a position on this?
The, the council as a body cannot. Once it becomes a measure, and it becomes a measure as soon as you adopt a resolution, put it on the ballot, and that resolution is to the county elections office, it becomes a measure, and the city is prohibited from using any resources or engaging in any form of solicitation or promotion of a ballot measure.
But an individual can off the DA's and outside of city hall, is that correct?
Absolutely. An individual council member, he or she is not functioning as a member of the governing body of the city of Selma, is free to take any position he or she wishes.
And just to be clear, the election, just to be clear, to clarify, the election this November will have the mayor elected for the first time by the city citizens of Selma with four districts, is that correct, regardless of this language here?
Regardless of what happens with respect to this measure, on November three, twenty twenty, the citizens of Selma will have elected the mayor-at-large and two council members from two districts. If, if that answers your question, Councilman, you kind of cut out of me.
It does. That answers my question, and this will be the first time that the citizens elect their own mayor in a democratic process this November. I just wanted to clarify that with you, and you have clarified it. Thank you, council.
All right, is there, are you done with your comments, Scott?
I am.
All right, is there any other comments from any of the council members? Okay, with that, I will open it up to the public. City Clerk, do you have anybody?
Yeah. Hello?
Hi, Mr. Self, we are on agenda item number five.
Okay, yeah, am I talked, can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine, and please note that you have three minutes.
All right. My name is John Self, I live at twenty-eight seventy-five Logan Street. I find it strange that Dwight Nelson can go in and he got his, um, his proposal on the ballot. Yes. Am I still unmuted? I keep getting unmuted.
We can hear you. We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Okay, Dwight Nelson got his, is on the ballot, and the citizens of Selma denied it. Now he, he wants to do a do-over, and you're all considering a do-over. Now, let's go down memory lane a bit. We, we, the state said we could have five districts, and that way, each, each council person would represent their district. Then, and then somebody asked each and every one of you councilmen if, if they would put this on the ballot. Everyone said yes. I went into another city council meeting and found out on December second, three of you reneged on your promise and would not put the five districts on the ballot. Now, see, I didn't like this mayor-at-large thing, because I was afraid that one district will also give the mayor, and they would have to vote. I was told, no, that won't happen. We are individuals, we will vote the same. Well, come to find out, it happened. You three people that live in close proximity to each other has taken this off the ballot. That is wrong. This is the future of Selma. There's no do-overs on this, not like Dwight Nelson, he's getting a do-over. This is no do-overs, we are stuck with it. How can you three council people take away the future of Selma away from people, the ci- the citizens of Selma? How can you do that? I would like to read something to you. A man's honor is his word, is the only thing that can't be taken away. So won't those, someone who says he'll do something will keep his word? The definition of word of honor, a promise that some, someone will do something and will do it. A person without his word is nothing. A person is only as good as his word. I believe it's a golden rule. If a man cannot be trusted to what he says, his word isn't anything. If a person does not keep their word, I see no reason whatsoever to believe anything they say. Now, put this on the ballot, let the citizens of Selma have control of their destiny. Now, if they decide to go mayor-at-large and fourth district, the majority says they all have to go along with it. After all, the person I voted for president didn't get to be president, so I accept the fact that the majority ruled. Let the people use their own destiny. Now, for the two of you that voted yes on this, thank you, you're men of your word.
Mr. Self, I have to apologize, but the three minutes are up. In order for you to keep continuing your oral discussions, I have to, you have to get that request from the mayor.
All right, I don't want to. Thank you.
Thank you. Or any other, anyone else would like to speak?
Ms. Navarro, I do still see you on the line. Is there any comments that you would like regarding agenda, that you would like to discuss regarding agenda item number five?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Solis, I still see you on the line. Is there any discussion that you would like to have before council for agenda item number five?
Yes.
Please note you are limited to three minutes.
Okay. Teresa Solis, thirty-two twenty-one Lee Street. Yes, you guys did not put this on the March ballot, because you said the cost was prohibitive. Now you're considering put it, putting it on the November ballot, which I hope you vote to do that, and keep your word that you were going to put it on the ballot, but I really feel that you're sending so many different messages to the community. You're asking them to vote for a mayor, and then you're asking them, do you want to vote for the mayor or not? And it's, it's, I think you're, by not have, having put it on the March ballot, you're going to cause a lot of confusion at this election, but I hope that you do follow through with what you said you were going to do, and put it on the November ballot, and, and leave it up to the voters to decide whether they want a mayor-at-large or equal representation by five different councilmen. Or women.
Thank you, Teresa, is that all?
Yes.
Well, thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mayor Franco? There is no other callers on the line, and I have no email.
All right, with that, I will bring this back to council. And do you have anyone with, which can make a comment? Okay, with that, I'll ask for a motion. I think five districts, I personally think is the best thing for our community, so we did promise the community that we would do this in, in November, and so I think we're just fulfilling our promises.
I do have a comment. You know, I was for the, I was, I was, we're putting this out to a vote when it started, cycle started a long time ago, gosh, like a year and a half ago, to put the five districts out to vote, that, that was turned down, then we got into four districts and a mayor-at-large, and I get support in putting it on the ballot, we have concurrence on that. I think it comes down to the voters deciding, as a previous caller mentioned, it's about what the, what the people of Selma want, and they should be able to choose, but shouldn't have to pay a burden of cost, which is the difference between this measure and, and Mr. Nelson, he's defraying all those costs for his March ballot and the November, whereas the city attacked theirs, which John has been a champion of in the past, and then a full of increased costs, and we'll surprise you didn't weigh it on measure S, but he didn't. But I think in order to do the fair thing and put it in front of the voters, we do need to vote yes tonight, so that the citizens of Selma can choose whether or not they want to elect their own mayor, or whether they want five districts. And I think it's the right thing to do, to leave it up to the citizens of Selma to make that choice, whether they want to democratically elect their own mayor.
And thank you, Councilman Robertson. Councilman Trujillo, did you wish to make a comment?
Just a question, are we, are, I, I was under the assumption that we already had debated and discussed that, you know, we wanted the five districts, and the majority of our council wanted four districts and one mayor at large. So right now, Neil, am I correct, today we are just reading the actual, the, the battle was, my part, the battle was lost many months ago, when the majority decided they wanted four districts and a mayor-at-large. We wanted, I would, I would have loved to have five districts, and we lost on that vote. Three members of the council voted to have a mayor-at-large and four districts, so right now, the reading, I want to, I want to understand what I'm voting for. What I understand is, the reading is, just because of the protocol, we're just following through with the actual four, four, four districts and one mayor-at-large, correct?
But this is a prelude to putting on the ballot question of whether or not you should be divided into five districts. And it will be on the ballot at the same time as the vote for the mayor-at-large and two district councilmen. So that vote will occur first in November twenty twenty. If, if the voters approve this, and you put it on there as a measure, that would mean that the mayor-at-large is going to serve one term and one term only. And you would, you would revert back to five-member district elections at the conclusion of that term, which is November twenty twenty-two. Does that answer your question, Councilman? I'm not. Again, you cut out.
We're putting the carriage before the horse. Yeah, it answers my question, thank you.
Okay. With that, I will ask for a motion?
Make a motion. Put it on the ballot.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion second, roll call?
Councilmember Avalos?
Hi.
Mayor Protim Gera?
Hi.
Councilmember Trujillo? Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Mayor Franco?
Hi.
Okay. With that, we are moving into our departmental reports. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. As was mentioned earlier this evening, I did make sure that everybody was aware that we learned on Friday that the governor's new proposed budget does propose to claw back the one-point-five-million-dollar state appropriation that we were received, or allocated last year for the Valley View Basin Stormwater Project. So Chris Com and our local legislators are working on trying to make sure that withdrawal does not happen, and have expressed their opposition. They will continue to keep us updated, and we will continue to keep you updated on any efforts to, to keep that from happening, and we will also work with Townsend to, on this application for the Stormwater Project grant, on some options, given those contingencies that are out there now. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. City Attorney?
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, we will move into our fire department.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just last week, we did get the tower moved. Thankfully, everything went smoothly. Thursday and Friday, all of the containers were moved to the new location, and like I said, everything went smoothly. We've got some minor cleanup to do. We've got some minor cleanup to do out at the old site that, so that we turn over a clean lot to the Transit Authority and we'll have that project completed. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay. And then I skip our Finance Assistant City Manager, Mr. Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. Just an update. As you're well aware, we have our budget meeting coming up again this week on Thursday. We will release in that book to you in that draft form tomorrow. The financial information that is within there is pretty much the same that has been for the last meeting. We did some small tweaks and edits, just really just cleanup from the final book. We will be presenting a balanced budget. The only information that you will see that we changed will be more of an informational. The org charts will be added at this point in time, as well as narratives and descriptions for the departments will be added. It's time for goals and objectives. So you can go through that information and prepare for our next meeting. So we'll have further follow-up and conversation and look forward to seeing you guys then.
Hey, thank you, Isaac. Public Works. Mr. Farrell.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. A couple of quick things from Public Works to follow up with what Chief Robb said. They moved the structure and now we're going to come behind and tear the fence down and reinstall the fencing at the new location. We're going to start this project on Friday and we plan on having it done the following week. Second thing is I personally met with the construction manager from NG Corporation last week and we completely reassessed their initial proposal. I want to thank Daniel, who's a construction manager. I don't have his last name, I'm sorry, but it was a pleasure to work with him. And that's all I have from Public Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Chief Gomez, Police Department.
Trying to start my video. You guys hear me?
Yeah, you have a echo.
Oh, I do. How about now?
It's a giant.
Chief Gomez, I need you to mute. It sounds like you have two lines on, so I need one muted.
Get rid of one, okay. How about that?
Yeah.
Did you go? Let me take this off there. You sounded better when you had the echo, man. I'm like a giant, like a man talking from a hill. I can barely hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Okay. I'll just, I'll just talk then. So we cleaned up Nebraska and Highland. There was quite an encampment there, about ten tents and Tuesday. All right, no good? Okay?
You need, you have, it sounds like you have two things going at the same time. So one has to be completely muted, Chief Gomez.
Yeah, I had a bunch going. Am I doing it now?
Perfect.
Yeah, you sound great.
Oh, good, good, good. Okay. So we cleaned up Nebraska and Highland Tuesday. The owner came out there, got a dumpster from Public Works, cleaned it up pretty well. But today, there was another tent out there, so we will get that tomorrow. But that was the biggest encampment we had in town right now, so it's gone. Lockwell Pond looks great still and Raven Properties do also. The AOCs, I directed my staff last week at a staff meeting. I directed them to establish training for the animal control officers. I just want to read this real quick. I'm not ready for that, Raina. That's okay, though, you can leave them up. Second Chance Animal Shelter, animal control officers will be trained by department staff on the proper procedures for completion issuance and forwarding of citations to pet owners who are found to be out of compliance or in criminal violation of the law. This can include anything from municipal violations for licensing and containment violations up to and including felony criminal violations for abuse and neglect of animals. Training will include proper documentation of reports for criminal filing with Fresno County District Attorney's Office. So we're going to be proceeding with that. And both animal control officers will be trained in addition. And I know I've discussed this before. In September, both of them will be going to ECA thirty-two at the Academy, Laws of Arrest, and that's a week-long course. And that is the soonest one that is available. So all of that's upcoming. I had a staff meeting last week with my acting lieutenants, my sergeants. And I'm really interested. And I know some of you have talked to me about this and people in the community have talked to me about this, about getting operations going where we are going after wanted people in the city, parolees, probationers, gangsters, doing searches at the residences. And we have funding for that. We don't have to use general fund, police department funds. We have Ed Burns grant funding. There's quite a bit of money in there. So I talked to my staff and I was pumped up about it. But they brought to my attention the following day is that no one is doing that now because of COVID. The act team, adult compliance team, they do, that's their job. They're not doing it now. Magic's not doing it now. So we're just going to have to wait. But I directed them to do Operation Plan. So as soon as this COVID thing clears up, we're going to start doing that throughout the city. And they brought to my attention, they have done that in the past, not just in the city, but they worked together with Kingsburg Fowler, Stanger, Reedley. And they'll do a sweep in all of the towns together with a combined force, which, which is really pretty cool. We used to do that in Magic years ago. We used to, actually, that's how I learned there were Bulldogs in Selma because in the summertime, we'd do sweeps in these, these small county cities. And, but that's going to happen in the future. I'm really looking forward to doing that. I think it's very impactful regarding crime. They never know when we're going to be coming after them. So as soon as this COVID thing clears up, we'll start doing that. This gentleman here, just going to talk about it real, real quick, a couple of cases. Carlos Jimenez, on May nineteenth, he flagged down officers of thirty-nine hundred block Golden State. And he was complaining that his girlfriend, living girlfriend, and her son, who was twenty-eight, lived there too, is complaining that they were fighting and that the girlfriend was going to have her son beat him up. So it's kind of an interesting story. So they start talking to the girlfriend. She says, you know, I, I didn't say that. I don't know why he would be fearful of that because he carries a sawed-off shotgun in his backpack. So officers searched his room. They found a sawed-off shotgun. He was arrested for that and also for possession of methamphetamine. There's this shotgun there. He, and what else she said to us is that there was another instance, not this one, where he had been talking to an officer on the street and he had this gun. It was loaded when we arrested him. He had this gun in his backpack. So that was Mr. Jimenez. He went to jail. And next one, Raina. This is Brandon Castillo. The next, the following day, May twentieth, he was stopped at Jasper and Hicks on traffic stop. Just a minor traffic violation. He was a passenger in the car. And he had a warrant out of Kern County. Officers went to arrest him. But when they went to take him out of the car, he said he had a backpack between his legs. And in that backpack, he had these weapons, this weapon. So this is a ghost gun. And you could buy this online. And I presented on other ghost guns since I've been here. It's like a kit gun. And this is the same caliber as what Marines carry, the Army carries. It's a five-point-five-six millimeter socket. It's AR fifteen, which is a civilian version of the M sixteen in the military. There's a pretty big bullets there. So he had this weapon. It's loaded. I think he had seventy-six bullets. Of course, that weapon is illegal, plus that magazine, which is the, the long item there that carries the bullets. That's illegal too, extended magazine. So he said he was a Selma Bulldog dropout and he carried this weapon for protection because other dropouts have been killed here in Selma, actually. And I asked my investigative sergeant later and said, yes, that's true. Other dropouts have been been killed. So great arrest, just off a little traffic stop. So he was arrested for possession of assault weapon, possession of firearm by a felon. He's a convicted felon. Carrying a loaded firearm with prior felony conviction, a large-capacity magazine is another charge. And person prohibited from possession of a firearm shall not possess ammunition. Just having ammunition is a felony also. So another good arrest. Regarding gang crime itself, still, there hasn't been a great deal, which is great. Since I've been here since March third, we just had that one gang shooting in Eric White School. But things have been pretty calm lately. No indication of any protests. There were some issues today on Facebook that, that were going about. Our dispatcher, our lead dispatcher was all over it, though. She was checking it out. And it seems like the residents in Selma were threatening the people who were trying to come here and develop protests, telling them to stay out of town because you'll get assaulted if you come here. So right now, there, there is nothing on the horizon regarding protests in Selma. If there is, I'll certainly let everybody know as soon as I hear.
Thank you, Chief.
Come on.
All right. And Recreation Department.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yes, I just want to let you know today, twelve seniors, we delivered to just about two-hundred-and-sixty-five. The Summer Healthcare District, we donated the mask that was donated by the healthcare district. So the seniors are very happy to receive masks. And it's very regretful after twenty-four years straight that I've been here. We are going to have to counsel the fireworks show this year because being in phase three, phase two, and also the school district with their campuses closed, not allowing large events for that nature to be on their site. So most of the cities I know have also counseling theirs. So unfortunately, we'll come back in two thousand twenty-one, hopefully, and have a bigger and better show. But we are putting out a news release tomorrow. We just wanted to inform you first.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Okay. With that, we'll move on to council reports. Councilmember Avalos?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Up, well, I'm glad to give the council. We're moving forward on this COVID nineteen, as far as opening up businesses. I'm glad the governor's, you know, moving in the right direction. We're all moving in the right direction as far, because we want to get back to normal. But it's going, I know it's going to be a little while. But, but the other issue, you know, I want us on our next meeting, since everything's starting to go back, maybe we'll come back to the council meeting back up here as a group, you know. I'd rather see people live. I mean, it's okay to see them live right now, but I'd rather see live person face-to-face, you know. It's better that way for all of us, you know. And it tells the citizens that, hey, we are moving forward in the city government in the right direction. We're coming together and as a group and, and making decisions as a council up there, you know. And I miss the people that come in here and voice their opinions, you know. I admire that, you know, because they have a right to do that. So I'm hoping the next council meeting that we'll be back here. Is there a timeframe, Teresa? Our next meeting be up here?
Councilmember Avalos, we don't have a set timeframe. We are following.
We can make it work.
As long as we're, we've been following what the county's guidelines have been as far as how we reopen. With social distancing, we can certainly accommodate getting council and certain staff in there. It's the component of opening to the public. But perhaps we could come up with a hybrid or even, as you mentioned, by then, we may be into stage three, which won't be a problem then. So, you know, things are moving very quickly and, and we would definitely like to facilitate opening up further, including the council meeting. I completely understand. So we will keep on top of that, well, posted so that we can make those steps as quickly as we are able to, whether it's a hybrid or completely opening, but just with social distancing, of course.
And once again, I, I always thank the people who work for the city, the city council as well. You know, taking, you know, taking our tough situation now, making the best of it. And, and we're doing very well in the city of Selma. I wish our numbers were a little lower, but hey, it happens, I know. But that's all I got to say. Wish.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilmember, Councilmember Trheal?
I just want to report that we, I participated in the SKF meeting two weeks ago. And we implemented our two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget. I was, I was happy that our staff got involved and asked a little more questions and getting some more reporting. Thank you guys for that. In regards to, I'd like to tell Shane and Public Works, thank you. I was really happy to hear that, actually, hear the lawn mowers and the tractor back at my home. They cleaned, they cleaned a basin out back of, on Orange Street, which hadn't been done since, well, since I've been living there, which is two thousand seven, eight. I also want to thank Chief of Police for all the hard work you guys have been doing. It's noticeable, the community notices it, talking about it. Aside of that, I'm good.
Thank you. Councilmember Robertson?
As the governor said, localism is determinative. So I think we really do have a pretty strong hand in terms of the decisions we make to reopen, the pace we do it. I would like to see us get together in a meeting, a live meeting again, whether it's at City Hall, maybe even explore the Art Center where there's more capacity and maybe space the people out a little more and more safely, just so we can get back to where we need to be, like to explore that. It's Second Chance Animal Shelter. We have meeting this Saturday regarding our reopening procedures. The shelter will reopen tomorrow officially to the public, utilizing all the appropriate social distancing precaution. We also introduced our new shelter manager on Saturday, too, which is very exciting. We turned a corner at the shelter and always appreciate the partnership with Selma. And in fact, Chief took an instrumental role in getting the ECA thirty-two for the fall, which is no mean feat, tough to get in that class. I know during the COVID nineteen crisis, the people of our country have been the heroes. They've really been the heroes who've stayed at home to limit the spread of the virus. But you know, the medical people have been on the front lines every day, exposing themselves to the virus every day, running forward, going towards it. And all of us have been staying home and rightly so, burdened. I think to express our nation's gratitude, one of the ways we can do it is looking at forgiving some of the loans of medical students. I know Congressman D.J. Cox has been working on H R four-six-zero-seven for loan forgiveness for medical students. I think it should be looked at for nursing students as well. And I think it would be a good way of saying, thank you, I appreciated the flyover. But I have a good friend whose son is an emergency room doctor at community. And I know the medical community would appreciate that as a token of our country's gratitude for a job well done. Finally, I'd like to say congratulations to Selma Jonathan Hernandez. He grew up, born and raised in Selma. He was voted one of the top college professors in the country a couple of years ago. He teaches at Porterville College. He just received his PhD. And I just want to say congratulations to Jonathan. You, you really do us proud in Selma. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Robertson. Mayor Protim Gara?
Okay. Again, I just want to say and reiterate how thankful I am for our staff, our first responders. I continue to get so many compliments from other individuals, colleagues, members that I sit on boards, how wonderful Selma does for their community, for their senior citizens, their food giveaways. It's, it's just unreal. So again, I just want to thank everyone who puts that, that first individual in place. I mean, it's, it's amazing what everyone does here and it's, it's just being united, especially in these very trial times. I just would like to say if we can just keep our first responders in prayer, our staff and everyone, and our economy, that we're going to be able to come through this. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Gara. Okay. And as for myself, I was on two COWOES calls, both the city manager and the mayor's. They increase those to twice a week just because of the rapid pace and the ever-changing situation, the fluid situation there with COVID. We also. We also, I attended the COG meeting virtually. And once again, for the second year in a row, the Fresno COG did not meet their party delivery target. What that means is it's important that cities and communities like Selma submit as much projects as we can. It helps them hit their, their target and it much pushes up further in the project list. As well as if COG doesn't hit their target, they may see reduced permanent funding, which would be not good for any of the communities. So staff, keep that in mind that we cannot, there's no such thing as not submitting enough projects to COG. And just a quick message to the community, listen, we are all in some very trying times here. I mean, it's amazing in just a few months, and you look at the news, we have civil unrest, we have the health crisis with the global pandemic, and we have this economic crisis that is just, we know it's coming, is really going to hit us hard in the next few months. And so this, like, we all been saying, it's up to us as a team and as community to support each other and work together so that we can come out of this in the best light as possible. And that's all I have for myself. And with that, we will go to our final item, oral communications. Notice to the public, at this time, any member of the public may address city council regarding any item which the council has jurisdiction. No actions or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issue raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public shall limit their remarks to three minutes. City clerk, do we have anyone which to speak at this time?
Ms. Navarro, I do still see you on the line. Is there anything that you wish to speak to regarding oral communications on any item not on the agenda?
No, thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers, I did see that we received an email that came through and it was regarding agenda item number four from Amadeo Garcia, who wrote in and said, I have a comment. I do not believe the citizens of Selma were miseducated regarding the proposed card room. I think the citizens of Selma simply did not want gambling in their city. Best regards, Amadeo Garcia. And that was regarding agenda item number four. And that is all we have on the line.
City clerk, did that email come in before or after the agenda item?
That email came in after the agenda item was voted on.
All right, right. Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I can.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much to everybody.